If everyone could please rise and have a moment of silence for all our troops and our brothers and sisters. And as Tuesday was D-Day, Tuesday this weekend, there were D-Day commemorations that had happened, and the President went overseas to commemorate all of our fighting men who participated in that action and who, some of whom were able to come home, but many didn't. I'd like to ask everybody to take one moment to honor all of these people. Thank you, everyone. Pledge?
My pledge is that I am a United States American, to witness our public institutions, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
And according to the Constitution, we must have the right to do what is called a constitutional right. And we must have the right to do what is called a constitutional right. And we must have the right to do what is called a constitutional right. And we must have the right to do what is called a constitutional right. And we must have the right to do what is called a constitutional right. And we must have the right to do what is called a constitutional right. And we must have the right to do what is called a constitutional right. And we must have the right to do what is called a constitutional right. And we must have the right to do what is called a constitutional right. Um, now, could more call, please?
County Commissioner Ashburn Barber?
Here.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
County Commissioner Nara?
Here.
County Commissioner Turner, County Commissioner Weller.
And could you give me your admissions for tonight?
Um, there are recognizing the cops and Middlesex County schools contributed to the replenish program, recognizing male leaders seeking them from the June 15, 2024, Elder Base Awareness Day in Middlesex County, recognizing stores to be brand out on the occasion of one woman's birthday, and recognizing Donna Breckman and her son, Ron, who is a county of workers.
Um, is there a motion to adopt the above recognition?
Second.
Local? County Commissioner Ashburn Barber?
Here.
County Commissioner?
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Nara?
Yes, and so I know we have a number of recognitions to give to the students and schools who departed replenish program this year, but we're gonna hold off on that since we're awaiting their arrival. So, we'll move on with the agenda. Correspondence?
Each commissioner has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the third office in our last meetings. This correspondence is kept on file in the office of the Republican Board of the Reverend.
Is there a motion to accept? Second?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And minutes for purple?
Minute of the day's sixteen, twenty-four to thirty-five.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Kelso, are there any minute resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
None.
At this time, I'd like to open the public discussion on resolutions listed only on this agenda. So, if there's anyone who'd like to speak yes to any resolution, please approach the podium and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, Charlie Prattville, LeBrunswick, New Brunswick today. I wanted to ask first about seven thirty-eight. This is the jail food service, significant increase of three-quarters of a million dollars to the GD Correctional Services LLC contract. I wanted to ask what the reasoning is for this and, you know, how the food service operation has changed, you know, as a result of post-pandemic.
So, we'll have our deputy order.
Yeah, so, the contract expired in March and it's certainly valid. It was just a suspension until we renewed the contract to PD correction. So, it was just a gap period?
Is there a reason the contract wasn't renewed at the time it expired?
Uh, I think it was just logistics.
Okay, and when would the new contract period begin?
Uh, it may begin July first.
Okay, and have we gotten back to using or having inmates participate in the food service operation, or is that no longer, is that just not happening anymore?
No, there's someone who would be.
Okay, and why not?
Uh, the AVA population is not classified to work in addition.
Okay. Um, yeah, can I ask about the seven sixteen, twenty-five thousand dollars for event productions? Which productions, is this place in the park or other, other things?
One second, you want to just take a moment?
Uh, next.
Yes, Devin?
Yeah, before. That's where the contract will be out on Labor Day at Rose Park?
Okay, so an event on Labor Day?
It's at that, yes.
Okay. Um, I'm looking for it here, I can't find which ones, but the AVA top rate contract, this is the marketing, uh, contract. I wanted to ask what's, you know, what's happening with this. It seems like the county's paying for the utilities authority and the improvement authority to also use this, yeah, here, six seven nine, the AVA top rate LLC, um, one point six million dollars for consulting and marketing services, um, for some of the county entities. Um, yeah, what's the thought process behind increasing this contract by twenty percent?
Charlie, Shannon is not here, and we can get you some more details, but my understanding is it's very specific as to services for the college and the magnet schools, as well as the Middlesex Improvement Board and the Utilities Authority. So, how that breaks down between those four entities, I can get you some information after noon, I'll make sure someone reaches out to you.
I appreciate that, because I do have concerns about the contract. I know, you know, it's, um, hard to avoid the marketing that the county is doing, you see it everywhere, a lot of ad, ad buys on TV and, you know, visual, you know, billboards and whatnot, like, I, I, I don't know, uh, because this seems like just the icing on the cake, right? This is adding another twenty percent to include the college, magnet schools, improvement authority, utilities authority, United States, they already have a contract for the county itself.
Correct.
That's been a very lucrative, multi-billion dollar contract renewed repeatedly. I don't believe it's competitively bid, and as I've noted here before, this company and, or to, you know, top people at this company have made significant donations to support the county Democratic Organization, which of course supports all of you and your campaigns, and so I'm just questioning why millions of dollars is going to this company that's not even based in New Jersey? I believe they're based in Atlanta, Georgia. Um, you know, maybe somebody could speak to the value that the county gets from this, or why, why we're spending so many millions year after year on marketing? What is the return for the residents here?
And Charlie, you know what? I hesitate to give you any specifics, but I do know, um, generally, that we have gotten a very good return on our marketing investment, but I can't give you the actual dollars or percentages right now off the top of my head. Um, so I will certainly have Shannon or a member of her team reach out to you tomorrow or Monday at the latest, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore. Uh, I'm looking in at six ninety-six, due to where, wow, pretty interesting, you know, something with housing for homeless individuals at twelve Laurel Place. Uh, would you please tell me, uh, what, is this money, the amount of money that you are paying to, for, to put this in, in this, or is this fine and good? Honestly, I'm not sure what's accurate, because I know a new house was just built over, over there, I don't, don't know the numbers, but can you give me some information on this, please?
Danielle, that is a portion, the county uses a homeless, we have what's called the Housing First Capital Fund. Um, it's about a million dollars a year that goes to different developments, and in order to use that money, the units that they, the units that they acquire, rehab, whatever with those dollars, have to be given to individuals that were homeless or formerly homeless off the housing, off the county's housing priority list. So, this is two hundred thou, two hundred and ten thousand dollars that's going towards the purchase of this property, and they're doing very minor renovations in it, so it should be, it should be having individuals living in it within the next four or six months.
Okay, because like I said, I, it just got received due to, like I said, I know it was a brand new.
Yeah, there's a new house that was built, it's, it's very, it's tall and long.
Yeah, so is that, is that the?
Yes.
That, that's the one that this thing?
It's on a weird, like, piece of property, but.
Yeah, yes, I had just noticed, love.
Yeah, but it's two, it's two.
Yeah, yeah, I'm like, oh, what did that become, that, that, there?
Yeah, it's two units, and each unit is three bedrooms, so.
Okay.
It'll go, and they'll be specifically to individuals who are homeless or formerly homeless, and they come out to the housing uncoordinated assessment list, so they match it with individuals that are in need of housing.
Okay, well, break it here, like I said, I was shocked when I saw it the other day, actually, when they were doing the Hungarian Festival, where, where park, where we parked all the way around the corner, but, okay, the, the, this thing, even though, like I said, wow, hope to see plenty more due to with all the homeless in New Brunswick, because the story going up, and I use the last one, that was where it's, due to where I had went to some harm reduction programs, uh, specifically, I can't use my other arm too, too much. Due to where, uh, let's see, okay, that's seven forty-four, uh, due to where, the reason why I'm checking on this amount of money, due to where I see the, about HIV and STD, due to where I know some harm reduction programs, they were talking about distributing needles to stop, uh, spreading this, but are you chances this have anything to do, do with that?
Is there one I want to leave, sir?
No? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Motion, local?
Second. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, is there anyone who needs to have anything removed from the consent agenda and roll it on separately?
I think it's. I am number three four dash seven five five R.
Anyone else? Other than you? Um, I will need to have twenty-four dash seven one eight dash R, uh, roll it on separately, as well as twenty-four seven two six dash R, um, both because of the New Jersey trans ability issues. So, Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Deputy Director, motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution number twenty-four dash six seven five through resolution twenty-four dash seven five five, uh, excluding resolution twenty-four dash seven five five, twenty-four dash seven one eight, twenty-four dash seven two six, we will roll it on separately.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Local? County Commissioner Ashburn Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Nara?
Yes.
And now it would be appropriate to consider the resolutions excluded by Commissioner McCollum and that's resolution twenty-four dash seven five five.
Second.
Local? County Commissioner Ashburn Barber?
Yes.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Present, but not voting.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Nara?
Yes.
And now finally, it would be appropriate to consider the two resolutions excluded by Deputy Director Nara, those are resolutions twenty-four dash seven eighteen and twenty-four dash seven twenty-six.
Second.
Local? County Commissioner Ashburn Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director?
Present, but not voting. Now, looking time, I'm gonna open, uh, to public discussion, is there anyone who would like to address the board in the public session?
Good evening, once again, Commissioners, Charlie Prattville, LeBrunswick, New Brunswick today. I will draw everyone's attention to an article that I wrote and published on May sixth, it's available online at lebrunswicktoday.com, it's titled, "NBT Lawsuit Reveals Videos of Edison Cops Detaining Busload of Immigrants." I know, I shared with you Deputy Director, I believe you were able to review it, and I wanted to ask for your reaction to this unfortunate situation played out in our county on January first.
Um, Charlie, I'm not gonna talk about what's happening in the municipality of Edison specifically, but I'm just gonna say that it's, it's my personal feeling that we are a nation of laws, but we are also a nation of extraordinary people who have always embraced newcomers, and I would hope that everybody who resides in this country would treat every other person with empathy and understand that they are human beings and ought to be treated with respect, and if there are laws to be enforced, we're bound to enforce them. If there are not, we just, if they're not situations where, if there's situations where the law's being misused in any way, and I'm not saying that happened here yet, but I think that everybody has to treat every other human being that we run into on this planet with the respect that we would all like to be treated, so that's all I'm gonna say about it.
Okay, well, I think we can certainly agree on that baseline, um, but as you note, you know, the law is the law, and, uh, as I've noted at this microphone before, it's not legal in this country for local police to go up to any group of people and tell them they have to leave town, to restrict their movement, to restrict their travel, and in this case, it's a really, frankly, idiotic situation where, had the police done nothing, these folks probably would have caught the train and gone to New York City, and, uh, there wouldn't have been a news story or a lawsuit or people's rights violated, but, um, you know, perhaps inspired by the mayor and his divisive rhetoric there, the police chose to come and mess with these folks and violate their rights and get it on video. Uh, now, unfortunately, Edison didn't release the videos without having to be sued, and that's, uh, another problem here, because, uh, it seems like folks knew they had done something wrong, and instead of owning up to it, they engaged in a cover-up. And, uh, you know, I think we all need to reckon with this, we can't just pass the buck or say, it's not our problem, this is a, you know, a one-time thing, this is the kind of thing that only gets worse. And the reason I care about this is because we're likely to see more migration, migration's gonna become more frequent for bad reasons, like political unrest, uh, and good reasons, like improvements in transportation, but, you know, I've talked a lot about the climate crisis, and we don't know who's gonna get hit, who's gonna get hurt, we might be the migrants, we don't know if migrants are gonna come and, uh, want to settle or just, you know, travel through. So, it's really important that we have good policies for how to handle migration, and it seems like, in this county, we have one town that has policies that enable fascism and empower the police to violate people's rights and do it with impunity and then go on television and boast about it, and, uh, you know, I, I'm really upset to see Mayor Joshi let down the people who've supported him and got him to where he's at and turn around and, and basically, um, you know, threaten, uh, to do the same thing Governor Abbott was doing, the same thing that, that, uh, you know, we should be opposing, uh, he went on TV and threatened to do that, and said he was done it to him, bragged about it, and I think that, uh, you know, as fellow community members, certainly as fellow people who care about Middlesex County, we should all be speaking out against that and say, that's not cool, we're not gonna allow it here. You know, in my article, Director Rios said, "It's home rule," he frames it as home rule. So, does that mean that if one town wants to have a racist police department or wants to violate people's rights, they can? I don't think that's how home rules should work, and I think that this board should condemn what happened and come up with some good policies, be leaders, guide places like Edison, so we don't see stuff like this happening again.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, it's been a while since I've been down here, because I'm suffering from a severe injury from New Brunswick Police Department. I'm gonna speak on due to where councilmember Suzanne Tocor Loveng, while I do not see her charged for drinking and driving, where her alcohol level was above two point six of what the alcohol level was supposed to be, where she crashed and marched into a tree, thank you, no one is hurt, but wow, like I said, if I do not see charges against her, I'm already taking this to the news channel, but back in two thousand twenty-two, I stayed complaint due to where about what? I'm sad to say, I've been here forty-seven years, but wow, do I have to wear body camera now on me from the hate and the racism from New Brunswick Police Department and Middlesex County Prosecutor? I didn't want to talk about this matter in front of children, but I'm sorry, but wow, also, with one of your prosecutors here, AP camera, due to where, wow, I filed a lawsuit May twenty-fourth for this, wow, she signed the papers lying on me, saying I had something illegal on me, I have the police officer's body camera, what in a world would she do something like that for? Wow, and then I find out this week she's gone, she quit, wow, because like I said, do I have all the evidence with police body cameras and a signature on there and from New Brunswick municipal record on recording, where she damn lying on me? I am not a criminal, many people lie out here, what, helping this community, saving lives, what kind of people are you hiring that will really do this? And like I said, yes, Alexander Yunes, due to where what? I reported from two thousand twenty-two, this officer completely followed me, I can't show you every, every article, what picture, but him following me, what, thinking I was a damn prostitute, because what? My, my son's daddy has six vehicles, what, now, just from the other day, how many videos I had with New Brunswick Police Department still following me? But wow, Suzanne Tocor Loveng in two thousand twenty-two makes an announcement to the, to the, uh, to the community, wow, Danielle Moore's phone is not on her tracker, I guarantee you, who is she? She's nothing but the devil, and like I said, wow, my shoulder to be torn in three locations, dislocated, nerve damage, what, I, I, what, I have a pin in my, I'm treating like a criminal, and it's all about hate, it's all on the body cameras, and like I said, wow, Sergeant DeFaco, Sergeant Isaiah, they don't even wanna deal with the case now, it's been turned over to Middlesex County Internal Affairs to Detective Russo, due to where what? Because of the hate from New Brunswick Police Department? Wow, do I have enough evidence, how many pictures, I still have to even load it up, due to where I'm providing all the evidence, but wow, and then the other lawsuit for April thirtieth, what? Me being treated like a criminal, where what? I was a victim, where I was first, I was assaulted, where two people sprayed me with police mace, where they asked me to bring food to me, was it a setup involving New Brunswick Police Department? Yes, and people trying to make me look bad, due to where what? All I do is help people, what, what do I do? Save people, save lives, look at the Lord touch me, I shall prove you several times that I have special vision, how many lives did I save? But I can't even really go out to the community to do things anymore, the amount of pain medication, what, four medical prescriptions did I have to take, or over the counter, what, I can't even take the dog on morphine every day, what, it's like almost anesthesia, but wow, heartbreaking, over hate, and believe me, if I don't see Alexander Yunes fired, where he was suspended sixty days last year for lying on people, on, on police reports, wow, did he lie on my police report when I was assaulted January thirtieth? Yes, he did, to protect other people, lied about the location and everything, is it on his body camera? Yes, it is, every bit that I'm saying is all on my camera and their camera, wow, that officer is not to come nowhere near me, the amount of hate that be created and due to where, like I said, oh, Suzanne Tocor Loveng, please, if I do, I know you know, Mr. Coles, he takes up for a lot of people dealing with New Brunswick, due to where what, I'm dealing with another case of someone coming towards me, wow, because he's an illegal immigrant, he gets to attack police, he keeps getting released by Middlesex County prosecutors? Do I have the evidence for that on that case? Please, like you said, people deserve respect, treat people equal.
Time, yes, thank you. Anyone else like to be heard in public comment?
Motion, local, for you?
Time. Local? Oh, voice vote, I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so, I actually think we do have some schools here for our replenish awards, so why don't we take the opportunity to do those? So, Commissioners, it's Fiona Barber and Jennifer Rostock from replenish.
Tonight, we recognize the top ten Middlesex County schools for their contributions to replenish program. On behalf of the Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners and replenish, we would like to thank everyone of the schools who participated. Your volunteer work means a lot to us and to the residents of Middlesex County. Thank you so much to all the students for the hard work they did, and welcome to Middlesex County. I'm going to let Jennifer to do the presentation of the schools that are here tonight.
Thank you so much. Um, our Middlesex County schoolchildren and their families are one of our biggest supporters of replenish. Your enthusiasm, creativity, and generosity produce some of the largest food donations each year. We have a hundred and three schools participate in food drives this school year that produce over seventy-seven thousand pounds of food for families struggling to meet their basic needs. While we, while all the school staff, students, and families deserve recognition for their dedication to eradicating food insecurity in Middlesex County, tonight, we are recognizing the top twelve schools that contributed more than fifteen hundred pounds of food each. Um, the, the top collecting school was Old Bridge High School, ROTC, with six thousand four hundred fifty pounds. We have Cambridge Elementary School in South Brunswick with three thousand six hundred pounds of food.
Thank you so much for everything you did, okay? Would you like to say something? Yeah, I would. Sure. of food. Do you guys like singing?
And we have South Brunswick High School with two thousand three hundred and fifty pounds of food.
I can see. And she'll take it. And I have questions.
We have Lyndon Now Elementary School in Edison with two thousand two hundred and fifty pounds of food. We have Knollwood Elementary School in Scataway with two thousand two hundred and fifty pounds.
Thank you so much. You want to sing with me?
Okay.
We have Amlegard Elementary School in Monroe with twenty-two hundred pounds of food.
Sure, I'll just give a shout out to my teachers, my students, and my community members who worked really hard for the food drive up here representing all of them today.
Thank you. You want to be in the video?
Sure.
Crossroads South Middle School in South Brunswick had two thousand pounds of food, and I don't think they could be here tonight. Irwin Elementary School in East Brunswick had fifteen hundred pounds of food. They also could not be here tonight. I'm sorry, honey, what's? Crossroads. So our Old Bridge High School ROTC cadets are here. They were our top collecting school with six thousand four hundred and fifty pounds.
Thank you so much for your advances.
We have the Edison Academy Magnet School with fifteen hundred pounds of food.
I just wanted to say a special shout out and thank you to Ms. Simmons. She's the advisor for the Interact Club, who made all of this possible. I also want to extend a thank you to Mr. Massad, our school principal, as well as the Interact Club and the people in it. So thank you so much also for providing this opportunity.
We have the Martin Luther King Intermediate School in Scataway with fifteen hundred pounds of food.
Thank you to all the students that came tonight and thank you for the work and volunteer job in video phones. Thank you so much.
I'm happy to cheer the media because the director is usually here, so I'm going to take a moment to just say, it is, we're all sitting here in the back and it is so heartwarming for us to see the efforts of the children of our community. And the top twelve schools got honored today, but as you heard, a hundred and three schools participated. So we cannot thank the children who did all of this work, the teachers and staff at the schools, and the parents and families who all participated so that our students can learn one of the most important lessons they could ever learn, which is to take care of their community. And it is amazing that they all threw themselves into this and the thousands and thousands of pounds of food that were collected to, so our friends and neighbors, people who live beside us in all of our twenty-five communities can have food on their tables. So for everybody who came out and for everybody who wasn't able to come out but may or may not be watching this, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And so I will end, I'm about to adjourn, but I want to give one last announcement. So this Saturday is Celebrate Middlesex. And I want to encourage everyone who's in this room, but also who may be watching, to come on out. It's an amazing day, it is an incredible family event. Every single department and program that we have going on in the county is represented there, but it's also a day where we have programs, dances, you know, musical performances, all sorts of things that really highlight the incredible richness of this beautiful county of ours. There's going to be food, there's, like I said, music, and fishing jerseys, especially for the kids. There are so many activities and it is all free.
Ten AM to three. Ten AM till?
Yes, ten AM to three at Roosevelt Park. And let me just be clear, the food trucks are actually coming out and you've got to pay for the food trucks. But it is an amazing day. We'll all be there and we hope that we can see as many of our friends and neighbors out there to celebrate our beautiful county. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor? Hi. Needing adjourn, thank you all.